This conference will now be recorded.
It's awfully loud. All right, good evening, everybody. It is... Oh, are you ready, Mrs. Anderson? Okay. Okay, so we're good here? Okay. It is Monday, May 2nd, 2022 at 7:00 PM. If I can make sure that everyone's... If you could please make sure your cellphones are off and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll. Here.
Yeah.
Sorry, it was my fault. It was my fault. It's my fault. No.
Here.
Here.
President. Councilmember. Dowdy.
Dowdy. You here?
Here, aye.
Here is President.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Rollins stated she was unable to make it this evening.
Make the motion to excuse Ms. Rollins.
Move by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Holland. Mrs. Anderson.
Councilmember Rounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember. Down. Aye. Councilmember.
Aye.
Now she's going on two people's side.
Come on, you're going to join up this one. Come on forward. Thank you. Welcome, the top hands in your arms. That's a nice. It's the side of the day. It's the side of the day. All right. I'm gonna have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Melissa Dowdy.
I, Melissa Dowdy.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the city of Woodland.
And the laws of the city of Woodland.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of City of Woodland Council position number three.
City of Woodland Council position number three.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
I thought you were just avoiding the picture. I was like, that's a good idea.
And as a, as a welcome gift, we have this wonderful, very expensive pen. Congratulations. Let's do this with the family here real quick. Everybody's here. And I think this is why I get to get in on these two. All right. Congratulations. Thank you. And now the work begins. All right. I have a proclamation this evening for professional municipal clerkship, the 53rd Annual, May 1st through May 7th, 2022, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, the time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government and other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service at all, whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center, unfunctioned local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affair to the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their states, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments, the accomplishment, the accomplishments... There we go, kind of, of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I will make the mayor of Woodland recognize this week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022, the Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation for Professional Municipal Clerk Gina Anderson and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Day of the 2nd of May, 2022, unless I embarrass you, especially if I'm not here, so come now. I should have had you standing here. Our Clerk of the Year, everyone. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all the good. All right. Moving on to Citizen Communications for Items Not on the Agenda. We have Mrs. Jennifer Ray King with us this evening.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Good evening.
Just want to make sure that you guys should have all received this postcard in one year. Send them all to the mailbox. But if you didn't, uh, you're the newest one. Probably don't have it. The Port of Woodland is hosting an open house regarding Austin Point on May 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 at Woodland High School. Just a little background on why we're doing this open house. As you know, uh, we have had the... You might not know. We purchased the property at Austin Point in 1963, soon after the port actually was formed. It was the first property the port purchased under, um, the new government. Since then, we have done absolutely zero studies on Austin Point. Back in the 1970s, there was an effort to bring a crane terminal, but those studies were done by a private firm, uh, looking at developing the crane terminal. But the port itself had not done any studies. In 2016, we started doing some studies on public access, uh, Woodland reclamation, sand and protest, and we're still doing those studies today. In the meantime, we purchased, uh, property from Department of Natural Resources, started in 2016. We closed that acquisition in 2019, and that's what started our rail study that we have David Anderson Associates company working on. They are, um, just have gotten in the last couple of days the head nod from Burlington Order that we are through 10%. So now it's the easy part, from 10 to 90. But right now, we're working on the 30%, um, as well as, uh, this year, we hired KPFF, who is doing a dockside study, and they're looking at the economics, the utilities, the infrastructure, transportation, everything that would make this a functional crane terminal operation for the port. By no means does this mean we have all the answers. This is very conceptual, but we felt that this was critical timing to bring the public in about all of the different aspects of Austin Point. Though we have multiple consultants, people recognize Austin Point for one area, but it's over 250 acres of port property that we own. So there's a lot of different things that are going to be examined, and the public is going to come and view the overpass for Wayland Road that is going to be required to go over to remove the aggregate crossing, improving the safety and reliability of the Woodland bottoms. There'll be discussion about a new road that would extend from roadway, where our newest industrial park is, um, that new road going all the way to the Woodland River, and part of that is going to require that we shut down Fennish Road. Many don't know that Fennish Road, two-thirds of it sits on Burlington Northern Rider Bike. So they get to say what is on the property and what's not, and economics versus roadway, their issue is probably economics every time. You will also see what types of habitat and wetland restoration projects that we're looking at and the public, um, access within the Austin Point. Some of those things that we're looking at is, uh, public access fishing dock, uh, amphitheater, uh, trails, trails that go over the wetlands, talk about the Columbia River, the Calis Tribal Area, that where they had, um, seasonal grounds down there from the 1820s to 1850s. So we're just getting all of these ideas, getting in from the public, so that people know what we're working on. Right now, it's about $1.2 million worth of studies that we're working on. So it's pretty significant, but it's a drop in the bucket when you talk about a $300 million project. This is a very significant, um, effort. Why it's, I find that it's important to come and try to do tonight is that whatever we do in the Woodland bottoms, whether it's industrial development, there's residential development, any of these things, all of it comes through your city. And as we're in partnership with the city as well as with the county and with our federal partners, all of them have been invited to come and see and get as much information, ask the questions, talk to the commissioners. My, my court commissioners will be there, consultants will be there. They will be able to take questions or comments or concerns. We will also be at planners' days. We will, um, be putting all this information out and then doing a newsletter to our 15,000 constituent members throughout Woodland River. So that'll happen later this year. So this is a time to start throwing the rocks, as I like to say. We want to smoke out the opposition. We want to know the problems. We want to know people's concerns. Because at some point, the first decision that the commission is going to have to make is coming up, and that is when we get to 30% design for the rail. That is when they have to, first, the first time that they go yes or no to me, and that is not the last time, but is the first, and is probably the most expensive that next step. So, uh, please, by ask, that you come, learn, ask questions, ask any goodies, um, let them do it.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight. And thank you for all the work that you do. Mrs. Butler.
Yes, I'm John Lambert, and I'm a citizen of Woodland. It's my time to witness, welcome and thank, Melissa Dowdy. Is that right? Thank you. Okay, so we all understand that our constitution lays the foundations for our country to become the most powerful, most prosperous, most generous nation on earth now, and we're thankful for that, and always like to see someone willing to raise their hand, make a pledge, show hope now. So, so thank you and welcome to, and the citizen, I'd like to welcome you, and, uh, thank you for when you're going to my business.
Thank you, Mrs. Butler.
I'm sorry, I just talked to the mayor.
Yeah. I was, that's all right. I understand you can't make everything. I barely made it myself. It was awfully early. Anyone else for items not on the agenda that's in the gallery? Now's your opportunity to step forward. Seeing none. Moving on to items on the agenda. I have no one signed up. Now's your opportunity to step forward. All right, seeing none. Moving on to the agenda itself this evening.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
So I'm gonna make an amendment.
Yeah, we need to give an amendment. Can we add, uh, Resolution 745 to the action item?
Is it action or consent? Action? So action item. Oh, that, there we go. 745, Resolution 745, there we go. Okay, got it. Okay?
So do. Motion to approve the agenda with Resolution 745 added to the action item.
What's that?
I think it's replacing 709.
It's replacing 709. Yeah, replacing 709 is what it would be doing. Uh, moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Rounds. Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
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 Dowdy.
Aye.
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 What's going on tonight, Mrs. Anderson? It is a little, a little off your game tonight. What's going on?
Once you get the best of the year.
Best of the year. Yeah, you have nowhere to go from there. You hit your ceiling. That's okay. We won't hold it against you. I'll, listen, here in a few minutes, I'm gonna take it, all the focus away from you in a minute anyway, so it's fine.
I just wanted to bring one thing up on the, uh, one of the, I know we approved it, but it's okay, but the address, mailing address was, uh, East Fifth Street, Woodland. We don't have an East Fifth.
On, on what?
On the, uh, the center church. Special event.
Put that on the consent item?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up.
Go back to the place that I don't think you know that.
But I mean, I just, just for information.
Is that the address of? But is that the address of the applicant?
No. No, because we don't have it. It's East Fifth Street in Woodland, Washington. It's Fifth Street, and then it turns into, uh, Beacon.
Okay.
Just wondering.
All right. Moving on to reports of City Council.
Did we take the role to approve that or?
Yes, we did.
Did we?
Yes. DeCarlo, did you not get a vote?
I, I thought.
We.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's one we forgot. There we go. All right. Mrs. Rounds.
Uh, I went to the, uh, public library, uh, event at Friends of the Library and, um, saw a lot of people there. It was a nice event.
We've yet to hear how much they raised.
I haven't heard either. I got a couple of things after the auction, so.
Mr. Smith.
I as well went to the, uh, library event. It was a good event and, uh, had beat out a, uh, said, uh, a Woodland port director for, uh, something.
Oh, would you, would you care to?
It was me. That was the rent, uh, flight ticket.
Oh. Oh.
A secret, a secret.
Yeah. Ouch.
Had to go back and bid again.
Ouch.
Oh, he stepped on right on me. I showed up looking for you, but I couldn't find you, so I could get some money.
Who, me? Oh, yes, I had family out of town. Uh, I was unable to make it. Anyone else for reports of City Council? Seeing none. Moving on to Public Safety Committee.
No report.
Public Works.
Uh, we canceled the meeting today, and we will be meeting, uh, next meeting is 6:00, 6:00 at 5:30 here.
Okay. Thank you. And moving on to, oh, it's me. I get to run my mouth for a little bit tonight here. Um, okay, Council, Akayakum Council of Governments, uh, attended their meeting last week, which was very, uh, which is good. So as you know, Council pointed me to the Executive Board, uh, to represent Woodland. Uh, we had a great meeting last week. Uh, we talked a lot about transportation and, and what that meant for Woodland and all the challenges. So Commissioner Weber was also at the meeting. Uh, we both shared some thoughts and opinions, and we are going to be putting together a committee, uh, coming together. We'll be starting with, uh, the city and the county to discuss a path for, and the cog, uh, the council department, uh, Mr. Bashing, who runs that organization up there, will also be attending, and we will be starting the foundation of starting a, a committee so we can identify all the challenges that we all are facing, to include the city, the port, the school districts, um, the residents in the county, the residents in the city, and then also developments and what that looks like, and a potential path forward, making sure that all stakeholders are, are going to be at the table. Uh, because there are a lot of concerns, as Mrs. Ray King stated this evening, that there, there's a lot going on, uh, just with her own entity, uh, but there is also a number of things the city is doing as well, uh, and there's a number of same things that the county is attempting to do as well. So we all need to get to a place where we can find some compromise and find that path forward. So I look forward to that. I was very excited about the conversation. Um, it was very, very centralized around Woodland and the issues that we have here, uh, or the potential issues that are coming. So, uh, more to come on that, but that, that is a report from Council of Governments. All right. And moving on to myself again. Let me get out my notebook. I've been very busy the last few weeks. Um, I think with everything opening back up, we are starting to get a full dance card lately. So, uh, talked about card. Uh, we had Arbor Day with the princesses. One was here earlier this evening selling tickets, uh, down in the park last Monday. Read the proclamation, uh, met a new resident of Woodland. Uh, she, she seemed a little, a little shocked that the mayor was just out walking in the park, so I, I don't know. Um, but very, very nice woman, and, uh, Public Works was there. They planted a new tree. It was, it was wonderful. So that was good. Um, I hosted, I've got a number of things here that I did. Um, Mayor Dinner last night. Clark County mayors came to Woodland last night. We had a meaningful conversation about a number of things. It was my turn to host, um, which is always fun to get folks to come out here to Woodland and make the drive. Uh, for those of you that don't know, we are in part of Clark County that are in the audience this evening, so we get to participate with both levels of government, uh, and Callets and Clark, to include both counties. So last night was Mayor's Dinner, and we, we had a, a number of conversations that went very well, and one of the things that came up, which Mr. Boyce and I discussed this morning, was a transportation, our Transportation Benefit District. That is something that hasn't been able to be funded, uh, through the voters here in Woodland, the two tenths of one percent that would be dedicated funding towards transportation. Um, the state legislature, which, let me go back for a moment. The reason we've asked the voters of Woodland to approve that in the past is due to the fact that we have a number of, uh, citizens that we service outside of our city, in Callets and Clark County, that use our roadways every single day, and this would allow to put some, um, some equity into the game for our roads, which is something that we struggle to, to maintain at times. So state legislature passed a, an increase of that sales tax that can be councilmatic, meaning council can take a vote for a one-tenth of one percent sales tax increase, um, for a limited time. Uh, so there would be a sunset on that, but I'm hoping that this will come to committee, uh, to the finance committee, uh, for discussion for council. Um, and what that would do would give our Public Works Department a little bit of relief, and again, sharing the equity of, of our roadway system and not just putting it on the backs of, of the Woodland citizens themselves that live inside, who chose to live inside city limits. I will say that one thing we have done as myself, and, and I think as council through our conversation, is not impose the tab fee increase, because we know that that is, um, not equitable, uh, to our citizens with that money going into our roadway system, and we have 12,000 others that are using the road, and so, uh, we have not burdened them with that. I, as long as I sit here, I will fight against that, um, but I do believe that the one-tenth of one percent sales tax should be discussed by council. Yes.
Didn't we put a one percent already on that? Or is that another new one?
But we, we have no transportation sales tax, um, that we've, that we've passed or the citizens have passed. There was a sales tax for this building, a, uh, that has a sunset, or it was a public safety increase is what it was, which the voters approved. We tried.
It was on the ballot. It just hasn't passed.
Uh, went on a tour today, again, with Clark County mayors, uh, again, being able to take, have a conversation with both, uh, counties and, and their leaders, uh, took a tour of the unsheltered folks down in Clark County and some of the things that they were doing down that way. Um, it was a two-hour tour with the other mayors of Clark County and some of the things that Vancouver has been doing down there. Obviously, we're not a large municipality. We do have some, some challenges with some unsheltered folks up here, um, but not to the extent that they do down in Clark County. Um, they, they've got some great strategies and, and programs that they have put in place, which I, I commend them for, because they seem to be working, uh, for some of the folks down there that are, are quickly transitioning out of the, these programs that they're doing into, um, typical housing, such as apartments and, and homes. So, um, I will be bringing back forward, I've spoken with Mrs. Holland about, uh, appointing her to the, it's called the Echo Board, um, and it has to do with a, a number of, uh, services, but we do not have represented on that board at this time, and we've been asked to supply one, so Mrs. Holland has graciously, uh, said that she would attend that, so I'll be bringing that back forward for appointment and, and hope that council will agree with that. Had a meeting with Rotary this morning, or this afternoon, Mr. Boyce, myself, and Mr. Goddard, uh, to discuss Scott Hill Park. Uh, we're still working through that. Public Works is applying for a youth sports facility field grant to the state. Um, so in partnership with Rotary, we're hoping that we can get some turf fields up there, uh, to, or the city can help with that, uh, through a grant process. We won't know if that will come through until next year, around this time or a little bit later. What'd I forget? Oh, I had coffee. I had coffee with, with a number of folks at the chamber, uh, last Monday. Mrs. Butler, sorry you couldn't make it. It was, it was fun. Um, a little early for my liking, but you know, 7:30, right? Yeah. Um, yeah, I know. Uh, so I thought it was great. We, we spoke with some folks. We already put some of those things into movement, uh, that were discussed to include, um, relief of water, water bills when, uh, watering your, your lawn and irrigation, those types of things. So, uh, again, we had some great conversation. We're trying to find some solutions to find some relief for folks. Um, so more to come on that. And then also there, I met a gentleman there, uh, who gave me a lesson on transportation and some of the old roads that were here in Woodland, and asked that we reconsider and maybe take a look at those roads. Apparently, there were some that went underneath the, the bridge at one time. Um, I'm looking at you because you've been here for a while. Uh, came underneath, what's that? Yeah, no, it was down further near the airport. There used to be a slip lane that came off, uh, that white timber would use. Yeah, down. So, uh, he asked that we, we reconsider those in our plans for, for '21 and, and maybe help with some relief, but, uh, transportation is, is more of a Public Works and, uh, Mr. Goddard and countywide, a discussion, uh, but, um, I promised that I would look into those as well. And with that, I'll, oh, one last thing. The city will be hosting Chamber After Hours in June, date to be determined. It'll be down the park, hopefully kicking off fireworks days before fireworks take off. So working on that, and I'll have more information on that coming forward. And with that, Mr. Boyce. It was supposed to be a quick meeting, but you gave me the floor, so.
I just wonder what City Council, uh, we had retired James Fisher, a former detective, was retired. And filled the position with Joe Russell, who was out front. Water counter. And we're advertising to people, children, so, big changes there. I also wanted to mention that the, uh, Woodland Police Officer Association is engaged, uh, mayor and myself, with regard to, uh, hardening, preparing, uh, body cans. So we will be engaging with them on that. Also, uh, you know, this seems like old news, but we just received assigned contracts back from teachers, courts, clerks, for implementing the contract that City Council previously approved. Uh, so we're going ahead on that. So if you remember, there were also a couple of memorandums of understanding that we were going to bring back before council. Uh, so we will do that as a separate item, hopefully, uh, maybe. So, uh, in order on all those items, uh, we're still discussing the transition final. Things are coming together quickly. Uh, so we're hoping to do a test run. We're hoping to do together. So we'll do a test run alongside. So we'll do a test run alongside.
Questions for Mr. Boyce? Oh, Mrs. Holland, sorry.
Sorry. Can you explain why, why there's an issue with the body cam? I thought that was state legislation.
It is, but anytime you change working conditions, arming and demand of arming.
Okay.
And so they're demanding arming, so we sit down with them.
Gotcha, thank you.
Ms. Randall? Thank you. Mrs. Anderson, would you like to discuss what you dropped off?
Let's do the, I've got the, the voice of A W C. Everybody excited about A W C, annual conference, it will be in Vancouver. If you'd like to go, you can register yourself, I can register you. Give me the information if you want to go. And there's also the less official, substantial, less official potential, like the, that's one of the times, perhaps seven, that one every month. Part two, part two. So that's coming up, and it's the month of May, so I'll be working on the annual report. Do you want me to? Will be the same thing all day on May.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Mr. Goddard, oh, I'm sorry, the chief is out, but he's actually online, if you have questions for him. He's actually in Quantico, Virginia, right now at the FBI Academy, getting all trained up. So, Chief, do you have anything for us this evening?
Greetings from the east coast. I will tell you that we're hopeful that the body cam resolution will be taken care of very soon, and we hope to deploy those. By the way, BOLO is doing very well. I will also tell you that we got, your police department got kudos from the truckers convoy that came through town over the weekend. I had a very good conversation with Mr. Pollock, who called from out of town, and he was very appreciative of the city and the police officers that responded in the area just to, just to show support for the truckers endeavor going to Olympia. So we're pushing through, keeping the city of Woodland safe and continuing on with our public safety excellence. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. And Mrs. Rounds forgot to mention that she had attended that as well. Thanks for bringing that up, because I did go down there, I had a whole bag of buttons, and the, my times were off apparently, because I showed up at about five fifteen, five thirty, and it was a ghost town.
Till about seven thirty.
Oh, okay. And then I had things Saturday morning, so that's why I went Friday night. So, but I was, I tried, I tried and I had buttons, so we appreciate that, recognizing our efforts.
The conversation that I had with Mr. Pollock was, I had it today, as a matter of fact, during break-in between training. And he was very appreciative of the hospitality the city of Woodland showed towards the truckers, and he was very impressed, so thanks. Thanks for the support from the community.
And thank you for, for going out there and representing us well, we appreciate that. Mr. Goddard?
So I just need to let you know that Wednesday afternoon, or Wednesday evening, I will be attending the planning permission, planning permission, considering the South Woodland Conference. I'm going to go change my class. So I will, that the city, depending on where it's, if it's broadcast online, we both have a part to do down there, it's really interesting. But I will, you will update it in the next meeting. Sorry, so that is Wednesday, that's four, six.
At seven o'clock.
At what time?
Seven.
PM?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say AM.
At seven PM, correct? Their meetings are always at seven, and then the county commissioners are like buttcrackers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And do you want to discuss the new look and when this will be changing? The, is this, is this still in, in the works?
So going to the electronic agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
So Amanda Hogan, who is the first director of Rock Tower, she is a whiz with technology, she discovered a way for us to simplify and streamline our agenda-making process. Instead of getting a Word document on the cover of each section, it will be made in electronic format, it will automatically be updated as soon as it's entered the system. So you will know when you're seeing that agenda memo. If you have any questions, there is a little field chart on the wall at City Hall that you can come down and take a look at. All of the information will be there in the location. And it will simplify your practice with doing one.
We have a number of programs at City Hall, and Amanda has been diving into those and trying to figure out how to best utilize them, and what we're not using and what we can use, and what we can streamline, and what we can lean out, and all those things. And this was very exciting, because she says it's gonna take a minute now instead of multiple times of going in and touching a document, so. Your, your life easier.
But we are using Amanda, taking initiative, fully using all of our software.
Yes. But we're actually diving into them, so that's good. Thank you, Mr. Goddard. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Do, do you have, hi.
Hi.
Do you have a report for us this evening?
I do not have a report, I, I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you, glad to see that you're up and taking nourishment.
Yes, yes, I am. Barely.
And glad, glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief, for, sorry, you, you may dive off, have a wonderful rest of your training, we'll see you next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent items.
Move to approve the consent items.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, seconded by Councilmember Smith, Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
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 Consent items are passed, moving on to action item G, assign Councilmember Doughty to council committees.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Holland, seconded by Councilmember Rounds, Councilmember Holland.
It looks like you're gonna take over Councilmember Plaza's assignments, so good luck.
That was human response, is that right?
Hey, Charles Wong.
Councilmember Rounds?
I agree.
Is that what you dropped down to? And then come, come January, then things will be reassigned, so you'll get more responsibility at that point. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item G, assign Councilmember Doughty to council committees.
Aye.
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 All right, the ayes have it. And moving on to action item H for Public Works, Resolution seven four five, authorizing the Public Works Director and City Administrator as signatories for grant administration.
Motion to approve Resolution seven four five.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Rounds, Councilmember Smith?
Sounds like, yeah, this is needed for the, the grant project over by the library, the sidewalk, I think going in.
Councilmember Rounds?
I agree with Mr. Smith.
Further discussion? Mrs. Holland?
Just to explain that this is just replacing a previous one, is what it is.
Previous resolution?
Yeah, so it looks like this one will be replacing Resolution number seven oh nine, so that it covers the Lake Shore Drive pavement pedestrian improvements, west, or crossing pedestrian pavement, sidewalk improvements, and some things over on Gun Club.
Anything further? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item H, Resolution seven four five, authorizing Public Works Director and City Administrator as signatories for grant administration.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it, we've come to the end of our meeting, what's that? We've come to the end of the meeting.
I make a motion to end the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
To conclude.
No, it's all right, we gotta, you can't do that anymore.
Right.
I'll second ending it.
Motion by Councilmember Rounds, seconded by Councilmember Chapman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it, the time is seven forty one, thank you, everybody.